June 14th HR Business Services Committee meeting. I'll be opening it up. And so far to look at the agenda to start off, we have no guest presentations for this meeting. So we will move on to number two, which is departmental reports and move right into the HR report.
So I just noted there, not a whole lot of certified action, but quite a bit of non-certified. We are starting to pick up with certified because we've been posting earlier, making some offers. And so there will be probably quite a bit more that comes next month. Been very busy filling our positions and just working through different retirements. And as the contracts have settled, processing back pay, which is all hands on deck for a lot of it. So appreciate the staff for doing that. We have had a few.
And the back pay processing is for, you've settled the contract and so now we're going back?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the contracts were all from 2021 to 2022. So that for that portion, that's the back.
Perfect.
We've had a few staff changes within the department. We had two HR assistants leave within the last couple of months. And we've been able to promote someone from within to take one of those positions and hire new staff. And we are currently going to be extending an offer for someone to fill our front desk. So ready back fully staffed?
And then you'll be fully staffed?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Um, let's see, the date, we have posted 140 certified positions and 58 offers. So we're making headway?
Yeah, very busy, very busy. The last thing I guess just to note is you're probably well aware of the frontline worker pay. And they send it out to all staff, so you would receive that. But we've had a lot of questions come back. Unfortunately, it's not anything that we can really assist with, but be able to direct them to the state. So it looks like a lot of our staff are at least going through the application process and we'll find out when they're available.
Yeah, I saw the email that came up from HR. It was really informative, so thank you for that.
And then just kind of to follow up with the negotiations, you'll see we will have three contracts coming to the meeting on Tuesday. The clerical, the non-certified business administrators and the directors units. We are still in negotiations with the Executive Employees Association and the DIA Group. We have yet to meet, but I just reached out again today to see if we could get some dates on my calendar. And then the last one then, we have a mediation scheduled for my firemen and oilers in July.
That's great. As I look from last month to this month, there's a lot of progress that's been made. So I appreciate it. Thank you. Are there questions?
Just a quick comment. I know we're doing things brief, but just wanted to note that Human Resources is facilitating a move at some of our Juneteenth celebrations this weekend. And a recruiting effort, but also an effort to increase the diversity of our staff.
Awesome. Great, all right. So that was the staffing report. So now we move on to business services.
Simone is not here tonight. She has her regular items on the consent agenda. If anyone has any questions, if you want to just reach out to her by email, she can answer any questions before next Tuesday's regular support meeting. I did want to just give a brief verbal legislative budget update. As we had anticipated, we most likely will not be seeing us.
Oh, I started without you, David. I'm so sorry.
Happens at home all the time.
My apologies, David. I'm sorry.
It looks unlikely that we might be seeing a special session with the legislature this year. So we continue to look at those projections. We are going to see a 2% increase in the basic formula loans that came from last year's legislative session. But obviously, we were all very hopeful that we would see some additional funds coming to school districts this coming year. But again, we will continue to work on our budget estimates and projections. We'll be having our final committee of the whole meeting to talk about the budget tomorrow. We don't really have many changes from our last meeting, which was really, I thought, a really good meeting, that we had some good questions. But we'll provide again a summary so board members can feel comfortable. And our expectation right now, because of not being able to see a special session in the horizon, that it'll just be on the agenda for the June 21st school board meeting. We had thought possibly if there was going to be some action. You know that the board is doing a special meeting on the 23rd of June for some of our facilities work. We needed to tack on the budget because we had thought maybe we'd see some changes that we could consider. But at this time, we're going to be moving forward with it just being as part of our regular school board meeting agenda. The enrollment report, we have from Cattery. And the one that I'm looking at is the June 2022 enrollment student sent projected average daily membership. And you can see that we're down just a few students from where we were last month. This is expected. This kind of happens at the end of this year. We also may see a little bit of a spike as we come into the summer for last year. Sometimes we get some of our students who are calculated based on hours versus days might be coming into our system. Some of those might be some of our students in the ALC and other places. But again, this is very close to where we asked the board to adjust our enrollment back in February. So I think we're, you know, obviously, we had hoped from a budgeting standpoint that we have more students, more enrollment than we have right now. But again, as we look at next school year and some of our current projected seat-based students, we're seeing some stability right now. And we'll have a brief conversation about that as we move forward with the budget.
Any questions on enrollment?
Do you mind if I just go?
No, please go forward. So we just did 2B2.
Yep.
Enrollment, we love to both. And then let's do child nutrition?
Yep, so child nutrition, you can see that there was some information from Sheila Oak related to food supplies and availability. We also did have a USDA audit that is more common these days than we expect. We always, we hear jokes from folks that people love to come up to the lift. That's why they choose the lift to audit all the time. So we seem to get more of our share of audits and overviews. We did have some minor findings. They were very minimal, but they were very complimentary, as you see from Sheila and her team with the support of Simone and the finance team. I do want to say that in the midst of a really different way of running food service because of everything being free versus having our traditional à la carte lines and other opportunities that we have for food service. This has been an adjustment for all of our teams. And then also, as you know, we've talked about this throughout the entire school year. We've had a lot of openings in our food service areas. And so our teams have really stepped up to support in our buildings. And as the superintendent mentioned, we're very hopeful that we can recruit more people and see some more folks in those areas and try to support that work. So and we are doing summer meals, which will start June 20th. We know that there may be been some questions that we had gotten through the superintendent's email that we want to make sure we provide some information on our website and other places where you can find the information related to our summer programming. If you remember, when there was the USDA waiver, we could have lunch in all of our buildings or any building in the summer. We didn't have it in all of our buildings. That is over, so we are only allowed to have service in the designated buildings from Myers Wilkins to the west based on our frame reduced lunch count percentages. And then due to what had been initiated as hoping to not have a lot of activity in Denfeld due to the clock tower, we're not serving meals at Denfeld. They will be served at Lake and Park. So we've got, we've got the west covered, but there's, there was some changes for that.
Yep.
So is summer school happening at Denfeld still then? And are we going to, are we going to be able to, to ship meals over to Denfeld for those students?
So we're looking at the logistics right now. USDA does not allow for shipping of USDA meals in the summer program. And we had indicated to that program that we weren't going to be having meals at Denfeld. And then they moved forward with having summer school there. So we're working through what that's going to look like. But Sheila and her team are working through that to make sure we can find some clarity there, so.
Could it be a daily pickup kind of thing, like a staff member who will ramp it up, like for whatever lunch we need?
We're taking a look at what those are. There's some pretty strict guidelines with the USDA, so we want to make sure we're doing that correctly, so.
And then do these, does like the milk and bread bid cover summer school too? Because it just doesn't school year.
So it does, so the bids do cover, we have a bid through July 31st and then we carry it over. So they cover the price. So we're getting all those same prices. It's just the new bid for the next school year, but it includes any services we provide summer or regular school year. Any other questions on our food service?
Excellent. Our special guest. So now we're on facilities, correct?
Yes, thank you. I'll start out and then I'll introduce our, our guests. And I probably won't read the facilities report word for word. It's kind of full this month, but we had a good month. We completed 97 work orders and had 195 open work orders. We have some new employees. One that promoted from one position to the new supervisor of operations and energy management, Corey Karen. He has been with us about a decade. And we also hired Kristoffel. He's a former JCI technician who hired into Corey's previous position. So we feel very lucky in, in the staff that we've acquired recently. And we're, we're doing really well. As far as capital construction, Kathy kind of touched on the Denfeld tower work that's underway. And we hope to be completed by start of school next fall. Conguent park windows are, are started. And we anticipate to be done by mid, mid-August, we're thinking right now. At Myers Wilkins, we've got a small roof section and we will be completed by July 9th or 10th. And we have a whole variety of painting projects throughout the district in almost every building. And there's a new Denfeld spa bathroom that we're installing on the first floor. We're renovating a classroom into a spa bathroom. As far as ongoing discussions of legal, we have the PSS track lane one bonding. And we're working with a bonding agent right now on that. Construction tasks on the hill. Work is ongoing in the facilities building. Site utilities work is well underway for the new DSC and transportation building. Operations staff that are performing an excellent job by keeping our sites safe for staff and students. And now this month, we'll be focusing on cleaning for the summer and making buildings for summer programs. And we do have ongoing vacancies that we still are working very hard to fill under health and safety. That can probably be self-explanatory. The, the highlight is we did have a OSHA inspection. We do not have the results yet. We have not had an OSHA inspection for 28 years, so we were due. I feel we did very well, but we don't have to report. And once we get that, I'll be bringing Matt to the next school board meeting. And Matt has continued to review and bring forth new programs. He's doing a great job for us. And the workout numbers are self-explanatory. And I'll open up for questions of any on the facilities report.
Mr. Spooner, can you just tell me, what is a building system technology coordinator? Is that like the intern, like what is it?
That would be, for an example, I'd say in the last decade or even longer, almost everything is controlled by a computer, whether it's a lighting system, clock system, energy management, primex, clock system is a good example. We need somebody that can, that's not in the technology department that can work in the facilities department, that can maintain and manage door controllers for access control, controllers for energy management, things like that.
Okay, so it's just.
The world has completely changed from technology area.
Thank you, Mr. Spooner.
You're welcome. Any other questions on the facilities report? Well, with that, then I'd like to introduce Pat Oberon and Nathan Norton, both from ICS. Nathan is our project manager for the construction on the hill. And he's going to talk about change events that have occurred. And you might say to yourself, what is a change event? Because it's probably nothing that you've heard before. I've been here for many years and I bring forth change orders, which an example might be the convent park windows. I brought a bid for a million dollars to get the windows replaced on that building. And maybe we came across bad wood backing that we had to replace and there was a $5,000 change already. So I would bring that to the board, explain what it was, explain why I had to approve it. And then the board would approve that contract. We'd go from a million dollars to a billion and 5,000. But change events are slightly different in the fact that you've already approved a contract and making up numbers of 30 million. But within that 30 million, there was allowances and contingencies to deal with items that we knew were going to occur, but we didn't have them in that original bid document, like rock removal generators. We knew we needed those, but we didn't have numbers for that with the bids we're doing. So we're not increasing the, the contract amount, but we're using contingency and allowances within that contract. So it's funding that's already approved, but we're here to tell you what we utilized before and how much we got left. With that, I hope that kind of explains what Nathan Oberon, Nathan and Pat clarify by.
Nathan, what's your, can you tell me your last name?
Norton, N-O-R-T-O-N.
And then your.
Oberon, O-V-E-P-R-O-N.
Thank you.
All right, run through. So do you, do you have the list in front of you guys? For any chance?
Yep.
So as Mr. Spooner said, we reviewed these change events. And as he indicated, it's not an increase of the contract. These are allowances and contingencies that we were planning on. So I can run through each one. I think I'll run through them very quickly. And then if you guys have any questions, you can, you can ask. So for instance, PR number one, the generator. Now this is for facilities. The next page is the district services center of transportation.
This is for facilities just in.
Facilities.
Oh, the building.
Facilities.
Got it, okay.
We're tracking them separately.
Yep, got it, okay.
So that's the generator and some of the gas piping to it. We, the next one, item B, we had some boiler pump changes that we wanted to make to feel better lead times. Because we had crazy lead times with Mark. We had, we were able to salvage some, salvage some doors for item C. There was epoxy removal and some floor prep that we knew we were going to encounter. But we, sometimes it's easier to let the guys get into it, get they can get into the site so they can put a proper number to it rather than putting a large number in at bid time. So that's how we track that one. Item D, change event eight, some smoke partitions and some shifting around some conduits. Item E, we moved up some acoustic ceiling tile to fit some of your existing shelving for some of your, your construction documents. Item F, a new panels for an overhead door. Item G, miscellaneous wall prep. There was a bunch of holes and anchors in that old building, facility. So this is just touching up all those, all those holes as they came up. So switching over to the next page, district services center, the generator. That's the large one that you're looking at. Again, allowance for it, we knew we were going to have it. Item B, the city actually came back and said that they hid a few more trees out there, so we added some trees.
Didn't you just, the ones you cut down?
We did, we did go back and forth a little bit with it.
Don't get us going.
Item C was adding a dry fire suppression system to the transportation building. That was one that we were holding allowance for, thinking it might come up with the city. Because currently, we didn't put a fire suppression in there because it's on heated with bus storage. But see, the code is kind of written where you could interpret it both ways. They said put it in. So now your future, you guys can heat it if you want. And now you won't have to worry about putting a fire suppression system in. So it is, it is better. Also included in that, you do get a little bit of added R value because they had to increase the R value. Item D, door, door gauge thickness. We increased the gauge of the doors from like 18 to 16, which is actually a thicker gauge. Now it's a lead time thing. Doors wouldn't show up in time by the time they do a drywall framing. So it was a small change for a better quality door, a frame. Item E, there was, that's site work contractor. There was some valves underground that didn't work, but they had to modify. Item F, dampers and controls. It also ties into item I a little bit. That's, there was rated partitions at the mechanical space that we, that we decided to add mechanical dampers in for the fire rating. And then also it, it gives you better for your controls guy that you're hiring. Gives them more controls to be able to like tweak the different spaces and stuff, temperatures. And all, we also changed some gravity, some gravity isolation dampers to modularized dampers.
What is lintel upsizing?
Lintel upsizing, so that, so that's a good question. So the facility.
You know, you're going to great detail.
I'll, I'll be quick. The facilities building, we couldn't get the existing drawings to. So the existing pre-cash shop drawings is what we wanted. So we had the contract to hold a, an allowance for, because we knew we needed to put a lint on that wall. But we didn't know thickness or what we were going to find, how much insulation.
It's kind of structure to hold stuff above a door opening.
Or a door window. So when we saw cut the opening for the, for the loading dock, then we could be like, oh, here's what we need. And it was a little bit larger steel.
That's not to go in the weeds, but that's probably, you're probably seeing a trend like that. Our strategy was to, instead of put a note on the plan saying contractor to verify and include whatever it takes, we took the strategy of let's wait, hold an allowance in there and figure out what's actually needed. It's just a way of us keeping our arms a little tighter around the budget. Instead of them assuming the worst, we're able to actually quantify what has to be done.
Well, we appreciate that.
Turn it out.
They hear it from us every month. Keep it on budget.
Right. We upgraded the motion detection equipment and item, that's item H. Item I is the electrical portion for the dampers and controls I talked about earlier and also the electrical portion for the pumps and monitoring for the fire suppression. And then the last one is rock removal to date of 50, 59,005. So there's, there's more rock removal coming than we anticipated. We did put some allowances. We had 200 cubic yards of site work excavate rock allowances. And we had 400 cubic yards of trench rock removal. But we didn't want to put it all in because if you're familiar with the construction industry, you never get as much back when you ask for credit. So we were anticipating more rock removal, more trench rock removal. But we want to put some in there for the allowance and then we set unit prices with them at bid time, publicly open bids.
So that if we need to do more, we have them separate?
We have a lot to. Instead of just again having a list of lowers, now we can control.
Because we're going to pay them and then whether we can have money back or not?
We would have.
We would have, but this is just a better, okay.
This one, so we have NCE, who actually should go out there and they'll shoot with, with like their survey equipment, a big pile of rocks that come out. And then we'll be able to quantify how many, how many cubic yards have came out.
They're in charge of it.
Yeah, and then they can charge us.
So we have to pay them to take the rock away, but they get to keep the rock and do whatever they want with it?
They can, yeah.
Thanks, okay, well, bonus for them.
Right. There's, there is actually some that we're keeping on site for, for, yeah, riprap. And I think we, the landscape architect wanted to come out and do the rock specialist to select some beauty rocks for.
Any agis in there?
But full disclosure, there's more rock. You guys, the next time I come, there'll be more rock removal that you'll see.
That's unusable rock, but you can't just, you know, sprinkle around the building and on the roof. I mean, that's $60,000 is a lot of money just for rock. And then, and you're saying there's going to be more, so that's a lot.
It's expensive.
But I mean, I, I understand it's, it's probably, you know, because of your control, a cheaper amount, but that's a lot of rock.
They're blasting rockets. It's a spending proposition to remove rock. Trucking it away is the biggest cost and that's what we're trying to control.
Right. You, you may encounter it sometimes before where it's already included. You know, where they, someone just puts something out onto like worst case scenario, that might be why you haven't seen it before. A project I'm working on by the Iron Range, it wasn't our project, they had $8 million in rock removal. So we're not going to, we're not, we're not, we're not going to be close to that one.
That's good to hear, yeah.
We're on a hill, can't you just push it and it just rolls?
Could you just very quickly explain the soil boring process and how, even though we did a lot of testing and we talked about it, there were just some unforeseen places we didn't know.
Yeah, so what we did about three times as much soil boring as you typically do. Where they, where they shoot corners, shoot inside the building. And the rock that we're finding is going, it's like up and down and then zigzags. And it's, it's, there's, there's a lot of rock under that, that big hill.
We quoted it to Battleship where we went in and we're like, we missed. And then all of a sudden, there they all are right next to it because we didn't like.
Well, that's why you kind of grit it out and you shoot a bunch of boards where the buildings are going and hope that you can quantify what's good and what's bad. If you're doing that every 50 feet, you're making a big chunk of rock between that 50 foot grid.
But the great news is we still have an allowance for it. We're still within our budget. We know there might be some more coming, but we feel really good about the process that was built to estimate. And even with that, we, we know rock is an interesting thing. It's a little, there's a lot of rock around. But we're on budget and we're working the B.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're trying to perfectly, we have, so we started with like four and a half percent. Started with like four and a half percent if you were to lump together a lot of allowance and contingencies that we were planning on. And we're, we're at about two and a half, 2.3% right now. Which when you get through construction, that's kind of what you want, you want, is you get further along. Maybe if, in this design.
Just getting it out of the ground helps a ton, right? Because that's where a lot of, in new construction, that's where a lot of the unforeseen is.
Yeah.
Ones we're up in.
And building up. So you said four and a half is usually what is usually the.
That's where we started.
Started what?
With contingencies.
Oh, contingency, okay.
And all that.
And right now, we're somewhere between two and a half to 2.3 and we're in a good place because we finished.
2.3, yeah.
Okay. And we finished what we need to do. We know there's going to be more rock. But basically, we finished, we have a better idea. So once we start getting above ground, we're going to keep our content. Okay.
And when do you anticipate starting the above ground stuff?
I, I take that back. We're at 3.7% contingency. I'm projecting of stuff that I know about that we haven't received pricing, that will be at 2.3.
Okay.
So we're actually a little bit better shape.
And do we have, do we have any kind of target of when we're going to actually start building above the ground?
Well, they're doing footings and foundations now. Yeah, we moved Minnesota Power, had a power line through one of the footings. So that got moved last week, so they're finishing that area right now. And then after that, it's full steam ahead going.
I noticed the corridor through the trees going up there. And so I was really impressed to see that, you know, that dig and then get covered really quickly. I thought it, I don't know if it was quickly, but it seemed to look like really quickly. And, and it caused a lot of, generated a lot of conversation. Because people want to know what's going on up there.
For utilities.
Yep, exactly. And so I, I think the excitement of, of progress is, is being able to take hold in the community, that this is a reality. And, and, you know, to whoever buys this property, people are thinking about it.
So moving forward, please will come forward as informational items through Dave Spooner's report. And when we have the opportunity to have Nathan and or Pat here, they can provide summaries or Dave can provide some summaries. And I just want to share that Dave and Nathan and the team meet regularly on these things. So they are the ones doing all of the lead work and having discussions and construction meetings. And these are not things that are taken lightly. And sometimes we have to say no to things and sometimes we fight for right things. But then sometimes those unforeseen things that happen. If and when we get to a point where there's something unexpected, not a part of the project, we'd be coming back to the board in a, in a different format. But right now, as, as owner's rep, Dave is the one that is responsible for keeping us on budget and, and on project and then working with Nathan, which Nathan provides us some great updates. And you see those updates too in, in the ICS report that we have here too. So I hope this is helpful. And then we'll continue to have reports as, and I'm sure as we get into the construction part, there'll be more fun things that we want to invest and add in and some things that may be unexpected, but some things that might be planned for. Like we said, that we've created allowances for, but we're just waiting for the right time to make those decisions, so. Yeah. Mr. Spooner, when we do the full school board meeting, would you mind, can I turn over the ICS project update to you? Because you'll speak to it better than I will.
Sure, okay.
You might know a little more than I do, so. Unless confusing the rest of the board is the object, object.
I think if we do something similar to what we did tonight, it'd be good.
Yeah, I'd appreciate, yeah.
Sure.
I think it'd be important with the whole change event thing to be explained multiple times in multiple ways.
The question written, no, what, what I said.
We can watch it.
Yes, it's recorded, so there you go.
Yeah, there you go.
We'll just hit play.
Yeah, because I think the change, I think the change, that works. All right, thank you, Mr. Spooner.
Sure, thank you.
Appreciate it. And any questions for me? And other questions for me than or Pat?
Thank you for keeping us on budget.
Yeah, thank you, seriously.
You know, if we can come in and say that, you know, even if it's just pennies, or pennies under budget, I will, I will be beating with pride and.
In the market right now, so will we.
Right. I will say that this team heard it from the very beginning that we, we had a tight budget. We knew we had some high expectations and they have been just really tremendous in making sure we're making the right investment choices and not just doing things to do them. And, and I do share that message every month, like if we make sure we're on budget, that would be really great. And, and I think too that we have a lot of expertise that can help us with options that maybe we don't always think about. And every meeting I'm in with Nathan and Pat, it's like, there's always something, it's like, well, we could try this or we could do this. Just the level of knowledge that we have in this team is, is pretty remarkable. And I think we're very fortunate as a district to have this project being coordinated. And with Dave Spooner too, having Kim and his expertise of the historical context of Duluth Public Schools, but let alone the site as well, is really, really important, so, yeah. Appreciate it, thank you both, I appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys can stay for everything.
Super exciting.
We're gonna have to, you don't know.
Yeah.
Go. Don't do it this way.
Yeah, go over the pick and see if you can.
Wait a second.
Go to the chalet right out this way in Herman's House. Thanks, guys, thank you. So no, we have no technology department report this month. Bart was out of the office last week and up for a few days this week, so he will have a major report next month. Perfect. I'll just note that. And then next, we have transportation. Yep, so normal transportation report. He did, Steve did share that we have had again more field trips and other things that are happening here at the end of the school year. So we're excited about that. I know, I'm not sure if it's in this report, but I just wanted to share with folks that we are supporting the summer school programming and providing some transportation with some of our summer school offerings that are gonna be happening. So Steve has been coordinating a lot of that work and making sure that our teams are ready to go with the summer school transportation and support. We have an extended program at Myers Wilkins this year. So through our estro funds, we're helping to support providing transportation for that as well, so. Can you tell, say that again, an extended? There, Myers Wilkins through the Duluth Community Schools Collaborative, they're doing some, they're kind of bookending our traditional summer school program to add a little bit more on.
Okay.
And then for that purpose, then we told them that we would help support the transportation to get kids to it from school. So the collaborative has been fantastic to work with. Nate Smith has also been coordinating part of that work to help support that through O E E. So we wanted to do our part, so Steve Johnson has been working with them to make sure we have transportation. So we think that's very good. We do have, as we shared last month, some new school buses coming to keep us on our bus replacement cycle, which has been really critical and very important as we're seeing more and more transportation opportunities. And again, as we've shared before, we are having to amend our budget just slightly due to the rising cost of. Any questions for transportation? Could I just share, we forget, Steve Johnson did a bus driver appreciation lunch last Thursday for his team. He provided barbecue, he invited several of us down. We had the best time. I know Superintendent Magus had to go at a different time than us because he had to handle a different situation. But Simone and I and Patty went down and then Superintendent Magus was able to go down. And it was, it was really lovely.
That's awesome.
I just want to share how Steve is such an admitted manager and team member and he makes a bean cheeseburger, so.
Okay, I'm gonna have that because that's.
Ran the grill. Actually, we'd be glad to invite fourth members to step by because the drivers really appreciate it. Seeing folks and getting some appreciation.
I always try to wave at my, when I see a school bus driving in a school bus. Just saying, they may not know who I am, but I try to wave.
We've got a gal, she's been a bus driver for thirty, forty years. It's amazing. All right, so now we're moving on to recommended resolutions. And let's see, Director Severance, which, will we have any of these come up before the, I don't mix up, I remember from your staffing report, right?
The, the only one that may get pulled, because we are still negotiating, but we have a meeting tomorrow morning at seven. So we're, we're hopeful that it will be ready to go. But the E E A would be the only one that won't be coming forward unless there's.
Which one did you say, sorry?
The E E A, unless the others have challenges with voting. So that would be the only potential that would delay them and.
But you said the E E A won't be coming?
Um, may, may not be.
Okay, got it, all right, sorry.
Um, and I guess the other, if, if that's the case, if some of these others because of timing of voting and I'm not. We may want to request a special board meeting after one of our committee meetings for your next month, just so that we don't have to put it off a little bit.
Okay, yeah, all right. But you're thinking we're gonna be okay? Okay. And that would be for clerical, N C B, A A, E E A bargaining directors?
Yes, hopefully all four.
All right, excellent. All right, and then, which is the non-renewal staff? I'm sorry.
So we'll be bringing forward a list of non-renewal staff, so they.
Is that certified, non-certified?
It's certified.
Okay, so this is ten-year decision?
Yes. And I don't.
Do the non-certified staff? No, this is, has to do with certified.
Yes. And I don't believe there's that many, maybe ten to fifteen. And a good portion of them are based on the temporary positions that we hired for the F C R funding.
Okay.
But because we really don't have a temporary classification, they just need to be non-renewed as a probationary.
Okay, can you, before we talk about that, could you maybe give me some language for that, for that? Just because I want those explanations to be clear, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Just a question about that, some, many applications, there's a box that you check, is if you've ever been non-renewed, to check yes and explain.
Yeah, okay. All right, and then the next, we have probationary extension.
Uh, yes, that'll just need approval, that is for another ten-year piece to extend for one additional year.
Okay.
And the union has been made aware of it, so we're just coming for, for board approval.
Okay.
There isn't any objection from her to do it?
No.
Okay. Perfect, all right, and then the next resolution that we have is for the membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
This is an annual application.
Yeah, I remember this last year, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so we're good there. Okay. And then next, we have a resolution for donations. And we got the great one from Northern Modern Smokehouse. That's awesome. What is our plans, how, how are we going to? Should, so board members, obviously, we can write a thank you note, is there some other way to express our appreciation?
We've talked about bringing them forward during our, our public presentation, board meetings this summer.
Okay. All right, great.
But it's very, very, very much appreciated by staff members and.
Absolutely.
Actually Patty and Adele were very instrumental in getting things together and doing a lot of the deliberate sprinkles and the rest of the seventy percent.
That's awesome, okay, perfect. I did want to share, members, that I spoke with Brett and we have several new clericals. And we think that some of them don't know how to use the internet system to put the donations out on our group website that he collects and puts out there. It just, we both felt like, it seemed odd, we only had one donation this past month. And so Brett reached out to all of our clerical staff and just asked before the end of the school year, we have some staff leaving now towards the end of the year, if they could please go back and look. So on the July school board meeting, you might see more donations, just to make sure we've recapped all of the donations we've had. I think just with some of the newness and, and some of the training, I just wanted you to know that it, it just seemed unusual to only have one donation because we get a lot of, lot of donations at schools. And so we're just doing a refresh that for staff, so hopefully you'll see some more next month. Awesome, okay. And then next, we have resolution acceptance of grants from the Northland Foundation for Denfell for ten thousand dollars, which has to do with implementation and hosting a summer arts cultural S P L and academic camp. This, uh, this project intends to provide a midsummer check-in, support and supplemental services to approximately seventy students from the school district. Are these high school and middle school? Yes. Excited, Nate Smith shared with us this application process and he was really excited about moving forward this, so we heard it at a cabinet meeting, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah. But it's high school and middle school students? Love it. And then, any questions? All right. Next, we move on to, and, and items for our consent agenda. I got everything right. I just wanted to share too, we'll have the actual budget documents after tomorrow's budget meeting. So it'll just basically be like a one or two sentence resolution, but then you'll have the supplemental document that goes along with it on what you're moving, so you'll see that pop up after we have our committee of the meeting. All right, then we have our H R staffing report here. Everything looks to be like it should. Then we have, and then under finance, sorry. Finance, we have our financial report and our fundraiser. And the financial report, Kathy, is there anything in there? Was it, I feel like it was another one of those, these ones, but that was just milk, maybe a. Yeah, this is pretty standard for the school year as we're getting ready for the end of the year. We'll see a lot of journal entries and some adjustments as we start the auditing process for the end of the school year. And if you recall, school districts, we do what we call a teacher payoff payrolls. And so teachers get six payrolls after the school, the fiscal year is over, that roll back into the school year and those haven't happened yet. So it looks like we have a big budget balance and gosh, we have all this money to spend, but we don't. Because we're gonna be doing these large payoff payrolls and those will be happening right before June thirtieth. Okay. I had my papers mixed up, so this is fund balance report and then fundraiser report. Denfell, the P B I S team, four thousand dollars that they raised, correct? Yes. This is, this is also another area that Brett is sharing with all of our clerical staff to make sure that we're getting those approved and kind of running through our processes. Also, we know that we had a refresher with our building principals related to crowdfunding and using online services. And we're excited about people being able to utilize them and having kind of that refresh of understanding of how that works. We just want to make sure that the board and the community understands because we do know that at times, people will go out and represent a school district, but they're actually not school district people and make it look like people might be donating to events. So we're trying to be very intentional about making sure people understand that these are supported by Duluth Public Schools. Perfect, okay. And then next, we have under bids, R F Ps and quotes, we have the dairy bid and the baker bid. So these are both done through our purchasing department. Tony Felikovich did all of the annual bid processes for both dairy and bakery. We are required by statute to bid these, so we are required to do this this year.
I, I think it's super impressive that we drink, you know, two hundred and sixty-eight.
Quarter of a gallon is worth of milk.
Oh, and the milk, we're, we're growing them big and strong and, and that, that's like way more than our trash bill.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
I have two Duluth Public School boys and they drink a lot of milk. So they're drinking, their much milk is full, isn't it?
That's cool. I don't know how little, little eight-ounce containers are enough.
I know. And then, okay, so then this is our, our bread bid, so those are the two. Two hundred and then they're twenty-five thousand, or twenty thousand?
Yep.
Okay. Next, we have refuse and recycling services from waste management. This is a beefy one.
It's expensive for, for recycling.
Yeah. Okay, and that was at ninety-five thousand about?
I think one hundred was waste management and.
Oh, maybe this.
One twenty, the estimated ones were one oh one.
There we go, yeah.
And one hundred and twenty-three thousand from our town, so the waste management was a little.
Well, all right. So we've got that. Next, we have the change, now we're on to contracts, change orders and leases. The first one is for four D two, change order number one, the Nordic Group, for the ordained East, East Mills School door replacement?
Correct. We replaced all the perimeter doors and during the construction, we identified several components in the door hardware that were not identified to be replaced that needed to be replaced. There's a small change order that was part of that project.
Great example of a change order versus a change event, thank you for having that on the agenda today. Right? Okay, and then under miscellaneous information, we have no action, but we have an update on the property. Mr. Spooner, would you like to handle that one? Right?
I'm not sure.
Oh, no, maybe, I'm sorry, never mind.
Monthly report.
Yeah, the monthly, sorry. Yeah, we, we walked through most of these on our monthly check-ins and Dave, these are just kind of that general overview of where our project sits in our different facilities. So open for any questions and I think Dave Spooner could probably answer just what he might have related to those. All right, there's that, and then we have district property updates, right? I do, I do want to share with the board and business services, Superintendent Magus knows that we are in negotiations for the remaining parcel on Central on the Hill. We are working on that purchase agreement, it is with the developer right now for review. So we created a proposal and sent that to them. And we are understanding that the developer is very anxious to work with us, but they have it right now, so we're just waiting to hear back from them. We are working with the city of Duluth on some items related to some development agreements that tag along with the purchase agreement. So we're working on both of those in conjunction with the purchase agreement so that everybody is aware. And we are very much looking forward to hearing back from them and we'll see what next steps we can get. But I just want to say that the team that's been working on that purchase agreement has been doing a great job. And Dan Matty, our attorney, has been leading that work and we are just actually waiting on, hearing back from the developer. Awesome, perfect, that's great news.
I'd say thanks to Dave and Kathy and Richard for shepherding the work of that project. It's hugely impactful for the district and I'm sure it really is something to impress you.
Next, we have expenditure contract sign. So we have quite a bit. Is there anything in particular we should note out of here or we? Yeah. Uh, I think we have a lot of facilities, bid items that were under a hundred thousand. If anyone has any questions related to those, the most I think are fairly straightforward, I'm just going down. What are the, what's the D R versus the U? Right at the top, it is department unrestricted versus department restricted. So when, whenever we have a D R, that means there's a specific funding source that's paid for that.
Oh, got it, got it.
If you see a D U, that's the general budget allocation that we utilize. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so. We're open to any questions and if any board members have any questions after the meeting, feel free to email me and I can follow up or answer any questions that you might have related to those. And then we have three no-cost contract signs.
We love no-cost.
We love contracts. Yeah, okay, perfect. And then lastly, we have grant applications. And we have, Mr. Laurent is going for the Northern Region Implementation project. No, of course, he's going to M D E and P B I S. Yeah, for P B I S. I do want to thank Assistant Superintendent Bonds and our teams for doing, to reviving our grant committee. It's been really helpful because I think some of them, we, we noted as we were kind of pulling these together that folks have been kind of doing grants without telling folks and, and sometimes we have some unexpected requirements that we didn't have. And so it's been really nice. And Kayla Carroll in the Assistant Superintendent Department is amazing at recording and keeping us all on track. And she sends us what I like to call gentle reminders of making sure that, that we're following through and getting that. And often. And oftentimes recently, uh, we've had to send several grant requests back for clarification. And it's been simple and just getting that clarification. But had we not done that, we might have been walking down a pathway that wasn't great. So I just am really appreciative of kind of reviving that and making sure that you all feel comfortable that we're, uh, moving forward. And we love grants. I mean, we'd love to have many grants on our system, but as we know, and Dave knows too, um, when we need to make sure that our facilities team and our technology team and the building principals are also aware. Because we've had, in fact, grants that have been applied for that have like, um, an electrical cost or a technology cost that aren't covered in the grant and they were expecting someone else to pay for it. And so we ask those very kind questions and say, do you have a funding source for that or is there someone who's going to partner with that? So it's been really successful. And I just wanted you guys to know that that's been a nice add-on to our system. That's great. We have no change order signed and we have no referrals or policy committee. Are there any questions? I do want to say that for the policy, I don't think it happened this month and I'm not, we have one more facilities policy that, um, Dave and I are working on and we just didn't get it to this month's policy committee, but we're hoping to get it. I believe it's eight oh five.
Eight oh five, I believe.
Yep. And we're just working through, there was a few things that we don't do that the template policy has that we wanted to make sure we weren't putting ourselves in a position that, there's just some things that don't apply to Duluth Public Schools. So we wanted to make sure we were going to redline it, that M S B A was okay with that. And we've been looking at a couple other districts to make sure those are in alignment. So that one's a fairly straightforward one, but we wanted to clarify that we wanted to make sure it fit what Duluth does. Yeah, that's good. We don't have to cut in case M S B A. Thank you. Okay. Is there any other questions? So looking forward to seeing you for any tomorrow at the budget. It's your favorite taste of the year. Oh. It's right. We will think of you.
I'll send you a recording of you.
We will. Do you, do you want to connect between that meeting and the board meeting if you have any questions? Yes, I would be, I'd be really happy to do that. We can do that if we're by, we'll walk through it together. Okay, good. Awesome. Well, that is everything here.